Brattleboro Planning Commission called to order on December 7, 2020, at 3 minutes after 6:00 PM. Let me shift over to my agenda. So announcements, please.
Sure, I have a couple of quick announcements. I wanted to remind you that the Route 9 bike lane scoping meeting, it's a local concerns meeting, is going to be held on Wednesday night at 6 o'clock on Zoom. This is an opportunity to talk about the existing conditions on the segment of road between Exit 2 and Main Street, so it's Western Ave and High Street, and what people see as the condition, the existing conditions for bicycling and walking in that corridor. This is the start of the scoping study where we're looking to place bike lanes in that quarter. So it's just a study, it's the first public meeting. After this public meeting, the consultant will go back and kind of come up with three alternatives. And then there'll be another public meeting for people to weigh in. There is also a survey out there, and the notice I sent last week, if you're not able to attend the meeting and you want to provide feedback, you can take the really quick survey, so I can, I'll send that around after the meeting again. I'd encourage you to take it and to share it with other people.
Okay, anybody can take the survey?
Yep.
Okay.
It's for anybody. And then, and just so you're aware, for this public meeting, we actually did a direct mailing to all the property owners in that quarter, and we also emailed the businesses that we were able to have, where we had email addresses for them and were able to get them, so it's been pretty widely published, including to those that might feel like it affects them the most, so that's good.
Dory's got a question in the chat.
Yeah, where is the survey available? So if you go to the planning department, I'll put a link in here, but if you go to the planning department's website on the right-hand side, oh, Andrew's put the link in, thank you. But you can also get it from the planning department's website on the town website. It's there as well. Okay. The other thing I wanted to draw your attention to was on Friday night, there was a pop-up public art exhibit in the Transportation Center elevator, and Kathy's joining right now. It was a combined project of the DBA, AARP, the Town of Brattleboro, and the Connecticut River Conservancy. It was a pop-up installation of what will next summer be built on the Transportation Center. And then they also unveiled some signage on the Transportation Center, so each of the floors was kind of labeled a different animal, and there's an interpretive sign, if you're in the alleyway off of Flat Street, and you go down to the elevator there, there's a beautiful interpretive signage of what the different animals mean, and kind of tracing back to the Abenaki, or how the Abenaki view the animals as well, so it's a really nice piece. Kathy, if you want to say anything, you should jump in, but I'd encourage you to all take a look at it. It kind of follows on to the pop-up that was done last summer in the alley, and you know, we kind of demoed some signage, and then also kind of we talk about public art and making improvements to the Transportation Center in the downtown plan, so it was nice to see. It's unfortunate it was during COVID, so it was a pretty small event, but life goes on, so it was good to see.
Any other announcements? Do you want to say something about the progress of the plan or where the plan is now?
Yeah, sure, so we're a little behind again on the plan, has been par for the course. I expect to have all the edits completed by the consultant this month. In fact, I had some correspondence to her, she was delayed in November. We were talking about changing the name of the title, or the title of the plan to the Downtown Open Space Plan, and she was fine with that, but pointed out that the logo had Downtown Design Plan in it. And so her suggestion for the logo issue is to just take out design, it was kind of a small, let me see if I can bring it up for you and get your feedback as to whether or not you think it's appropriate, but everywhere else we would change the title. It's just kind of the branding of it has to share. So before, down in this blue block, there had been design kind of flipped on its side and going up, it said "Design Where My Cursor Is." So she's suggesting, suggesting the easiest thing would be to just remove that, and I'd be curious of your feedback of that. And it's, it's not like this logo is big, you know, it was in our marketing of the different public outreach events, but it was not, it's not real big in the actual story map of the plan.
I think that title is fine, Brattleboro Downtown Plan.
I know this is small, Sue, but is there a reason that Brattleboro isn't capitalized?
Um, no, I think it was just a design choice.
Okay.
Maybe to emphasize the design, downtown design plan at that point, it was just design.
Yeah, I don't know, it's something, I, the downtown plan doesn't bother me. I would say Brattleboro, having Brattleboro not capitalized and downtown plan capitalized doesn't, kind of reads a little funny. Eye-wise, you see, it just is, I think capitals down would look nicer, but that's just me.
Would you prefer Brattleboro to be all in capitalized? I mean, it's a minor change, I can ask her to make it.
I think just the first letter, yeah, I don't think you need to like punch it too much. I think just capitals down.
That's my sense too, it's just that it's kind of extreme between all lowercase and all uppercase.
Okay, Planning Commission, does that sound okay?
It's fine with me too for the logo, except maybe the PLA can be spaced out.
Okay. I'll get these changes to her, and I'm expecting to see the other ones in the coming days, in the week, and then we'll plan on rolling it out as we were before, so probably small Zoom meetings to introduce it to people and get some feedback. And so that's the way we'll start it and kind of bring feedback to the Planning Commission as, as we have it, and then maybe a larger public meeting, like we're going to undertake with this local concerns meeting in January.
Great. Okay, am I, I can't, yes, all right. So the next item is public comment. I see we have members of the public here today, so it's lovely to see y'all. Do any of you have any comments? No, okay, I know you're speaking later, but so then next on the docket is the approval of minutes, and thank you, Andrew, now the minutes are coming quite early, I hope everybody remembers having read them, and now would be the time, I guess we'll, I'll take a motion to approve them, and then we can have a discussion, if there is any. So is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 2, 2020?
Sorry, I'll move to approve them.
There are second.
Second.
Great discussion. All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted for November 2020, raise your hand. Okay, the minutes are approved unanimously, I, well, anybody, yeah, you guys are all that, so you, we approve them unanimously, I don't have to ask the rest. All right, so preferred solar site request. Sue is going to introduce this to give us a little background on our role, as since we, the commissioners, I think we have not been faced with this responsibility before, so take it away, Sue.
Sure, yeah, so this is a first for the Planning Commission, and I always find it exciting where you actually have, you know, a binding recommendation that you're making, or it's part, it's one of three that are needed to secure a preferred solar site designation. So the preferred solar site designation is, was kind of a policy direction from the state of Vermont to really prioritize sites with incentives, so it can either be financial or a size of a project. For solar projects to be developed in areas, in not, in not green space areas that are, you know, desirable, you know, sorry, I'm stumbling over my words, but it was, it was created to kind of really incentivize projects to be developed in developed areas on sites that maybe are less desirable to other types of development, maybe they're a brownfield site, so it's the cost to develop it are higher, it's a landfill, or it's a reclaimed gravel site. But there, there's a whole list of them, and including it is, there's a process by which towns can designate preferred solar sites, and that can happen one of two ways. It can be through the town planning process. If we had, if we were to have an energy chapter of our plan that meant a certain certification level, we would have designated preferred sites. Our town plan energy chapter does not do that, it kind of was happening at the same time that legislation was coming forward, and at the time, we didn't see very much benefit to getting the enhanced energy chapter. We can always revisit that in the future. But the second process is, a developer can request from the town planning commission, the select board, and the regional planning commission for a site to be designated as a preferred site, and so that's what's before you tonight, it's, we're looking at the site, we've been asked to designate it as a preferred solar site, so we've not done this before in the Town of Brattleboro, so we don't necessarily have review criteria. Some of the information that you received in your, in the Google Drive was based on a regional planning commission in a different part of the site, they had some criteria by which they evaluate, that, by which they evaluate projects, so Andrew put that together, kind of looks at whether there's wetlands on site, and whether there's important natural resources, and what does the town plan say about it? So that was a document that we had prepared for you. But the point of tonight is not to get into the fine details of the site plan of a project, because that would happen at a different process in the solar development. This is really to, for the Planning Commission to decide if they think that this is an acceptable site for preferred solar development. For the developer, it may mean that they can build a larger project than would otherwise be permitted on the property, or it could mean that they're going to get a better rate as well, like, I think it's up to, you know, a penny more on the return, at least that's what it was a couple of years ago. You know, there's some details of the site that, you know, if it was to be developed with solar, that would come in the next phase through the 248 process, where they might be looking at the natural resource and the aesthetic impacts. But there's some crossover information, because it might help you make a decision on whether or not it's an appropriate preferred site. So I can take quick questions on that, or we can turn it over to Andy Kay, who is with Integrated Solar, who comes with this request to the Planning Commission tonight.
Okay. Andy, you want to take it away?
All right. I apologize for my voice, it will come and go as I speak, I'll do the best I can. So I provided a view analysis, and Sue, could we put that up? Maybe we should start with the site plan, just to get a general sense of that.
Yes, let me get that out.
Sue, if you give me a moment, I can be kind of the SlideShare person if you'd like. I think I have, there was an updated version that you sent, is that correct, Andy?
That's right, yes.
Okay, give me one second, and I can pull that up and be the kind of slide deck guy, if that sounds good.
If you want to do that, that's fine, Stephen, thank you. We're going to go with the concept plan first, and then probably the view shed as the conversation goes that way.
Just give me one second, and I'll, I'll get it up and share.
Did all you commissioners get an opportunity to read the, some of the material in the packet?
Yes.
Excellent.
I apologize, I have a slow connection, so it's going to take a second to pull this up. Andy, you may be best served by giving just kind of an introduction to the project and, and where it is generally, and then I can pull up the maps and show people specifically, does that sound okay?
The project is to Exit 1 on Route 5. It's physically directly across from the entrance to the Exit 1 Industrial Park. It's a 13.8 acre site. It's currently zoned industrial, I believe that it was classified that way in 2015, I believe. The site is sloped, and it, it has modest slopes, steep slopes going from the northwest to the southeast. And the site has a fair amount of ledge. So it's not likely to be developed in the southeast portion. It's the northwest portion that has more modest slopes. It's
Thank you, Stephen.
The industrial
My connection.
Yep, thank you, Stephen.
Sorry, just for a little orientation to what Andy was saying, it's just south of Exit 1, which is here, as you can see, and this is Route 5, and the property is here where he's put the arrow.
If we could go back up one slide, back up to sheet A1.
Is this one?
There we are, so there you see the topography sloping from the northwest to the southeast. And if, if you folks are familiar with that area, there's a fair amount of ledge along Route 5 at the property frontage. So I've done a rendering of the project. So if we can move on the slides, there's the survey. There's the project superimposed on these, the Vermont A&R map, with the driveway access coming from the west, where the topography is more favorable. And this area shows the position of Route 91 and the industrial park relative to the project. And if you move on, that's a modeling of the forestation that's around the project, based on what you see there. And if you move on again, so that top spot, that top photograph is a picture of the approximate entrance of where the project would, would gain access, and then looking at it from both directions, eastward and westward below that. Keep going. Those show approximate site distances from the west. I estimate that it's approximately 300 feet to the site entrance from the east, I'm estimating it's greater than 600 feet. The speed limit from the west is 35 miles per hour, the speed limit from the, I'm sorry, the speed limit from the east is 35 miles an hour, the speed limit from the west is 40 until it gets to the site entrance, where it turns to 35. And if we could go to the next slide, there's the area in front of the Exit 1 Industrial Park. In the upper left-hand photo there, you can see the park on the right. In the next photo to the right, the park is on the left. The site is directly across the street, that's what it looks like, down below. So you get a sense of the topography, and how the site rises directly from the road. If we can move on. So that's eight of eight. We have a second step of, of drawing sheets. Are you able to load those, Stephen?
I've got them for you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you allowed to ask questions during this process, or should we wait till after?
Sure, go ahead.
So, so the, the woods that is along the road to the right there, this would be set back from it, so you wouldn't just be looking directly at the solar panels, they'd be further up.
Yeah, you wouldn't see any of the project from that vantage point on Route 5.
Got you, okay.
It, it's over a 200-foot elevation change from Route 5 up to where the project site is.
Got you.
The, the images that are coming up, the next series of images show that, they show projections.
And I looked at some of that before, I just wanted to, I just wasn't too sure the proximity to the road, so, thank you.
And if I could just give two cents in context, not specific to Andy's project, but specific to the value of having preferred solar sites in town. We do want to have these, we do want to identify these, and we do want to figure out ways to accommodate more solar in order to achieve our goals, there's no other way but to do that. The value that I see in, in these kinds of designations is often, development can't happen unless it happens at a certain scale, and for some developers, this enables things to really be possible. The designation moves it from 150 KW to 500 potentially, which I believe that's, you know, what Andy's proposing here. And as, as I see it, and, and I visited the site, you know, it would be, you know, appropriate in many ways for that, and the, the designation that we're tasked with giving in this moment does not cover the extensive review that will be undergone by the Public Utilities Commission and others to really look at very clear specifics within, within this project, to, to give it a certificate of public good, so just to understand that this is not the green light for a project to happen, this is the, the designation of a site so that it could explore the potential for it happening, and give it the potential to happen at scale in a way that it may not otherwise happen. So just to say, in general, these sites are valuable, and we need to figure out how to accommodate them in the appropriate places in town, and I'm glad to see something come forward here, so I'm, I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Andy, you want to keep going?
And so this next sheet shows the site superimposed on the A&R map with a wider view of Route 91. And I've done some, some modeling to see what the views, view shed looks like from 91 northbound. So I've, I've provided a number of photos that walk you from a point near FW Web on 91 down to the Exit 1 off-ramp. And so I've selected a viewpoint A, which is about 2,200 feet from the site, and a viewpoint B, which is about 1,400 feet from the site, I believe. And I've, I will show renderings that, that model what that might look like for the highway. So if we can move on to the next slide, there's the site and those viewpoints without the A&R overlay. And if we can move on, that's, that's what the modeling looks like before it's overlaid on top of a photo. Move on. There's, there's the site seen from just below FW, just above FW Web. There I show what I'm calling a view corridor of about 1,600 feet along 91, where you get a a view or a partial view of the site like that. Oh, if we go to the next sheet. And so from the upper left, counterclockwise fashion, this takes you down, takes you up a highway, starting from FW Web, going down to the bottom, that's viewpoint A, then starting back at the upper right. Then in the middle, that's viewpoint B, and then this number seven photo is what I'm calling the final site before you get off Exit 1. So that, that's what that 1,600-foot distance, what I'm calling the view corridor amounts to. So if we could go to the next view. This is where I've superimposed my rendering on the photo, so you can see, because of the relatively relatively flat position of solar panels, the maturity of the trees on the site, and the distance from the highway is a, it's got a limited view of, of the project.
Andrew, is the, just the, is the blue that you see in the upper photo, the, what would be the solar panels, or the orange and blue?
Orange are deciduous trees, the blue are the solar panels. If we go to the next view, that shows Point B further down the highway, and it's a similar kind of view. This slide shows what the slope of the solar array on the site is, up from north to south, about 9% with existing grades. From east to west, let me reposition my that's about 11% in the driveway, and from west to east, it's about 14.9%. I do expect when we do site grading, that these solar array grades will be reduced. I would expect that that 14.9% grade might, might be reduced to around 12%. Our grades are all less than 15%. And so are there any questions about the, about the how this is, grades?
Prudence. So it seems like, you know, with the pictures of the, the view from 91, that that there, that the array will go where there aren't currently trees, so the pictures with the trees, those are trees that have to be planted and grow up to that size, is that correct?
No, it looks like
This site is only matured with its forestation. So you can see there, the site is completely covered with trees. So there's a, the clearing that will occur will be in the solar array area, the solar access around it at the driveway, and that's about seven acres, I believe.
Yeah, I think that's right. So the, there'll be remaining mature trees in front then, okay.
Right, those trees that I showed there in that rendering are in fact existing trees. If we go back to an earlier view, I think it was maybe sheet A9, we can see the A&R map. We can see the A and R map.
Yeah, that's the site right there, I mean, it's completely forested right now.
Right.
Right, there's some in your in your report, you mentioned, I think there's a total there, you you have to clear for the driveway and you have to clear for the site. And I want to the so I remember that it was the site itself is two point four acres, I think where the array is, and so. That needs to be cleared, but then there was a there was a larger amount of trees that need to be cleared, but in any case. The trees don't won't need to grow up in order to prevent the view of the site. Are there other questions? I can't see you all, so um. Uh, because I only I only have the site of uh of four four people, so if you have have a question, feel free to to speak now.
Sure, um Felicity, so you know, there's a little double bar you can grab and slide it to minimize the. The presentation and to maximize the people, and so you can see more people.
Bar.
Yeah, the little double bar, you grab it and you slide it over. What was my question? Oh, so you what is depicted here, so Stefan Stephen had said. That with the preferred site, I I forget the megawatts, you could do a certain megawatts instead of the smaller amount of megawatts. What's modeled here is the larger amount of megawatts, is that correct?
And so with with no uh financial penalty, you could do fifteen kilowatts. Under the net metering program, this this is how you might do for a house. With a uh with a fairly significant financial penalty, you could do a hundred and fifty kilowatts. Without the preferred solar site status. With the solar, with the preferred solar site status, you could do the hundred and fifty. With only a modest penalty, so so there's a difference in penalty for the one fifty. But in in no event can more than a hundred and fifty KW be done without the preferred solar site, so that's why I'm here.
So what's what we're looking at here in terms of the is the hundred and fifty kilowatts?
No, that's five hundred kilowatts.
Five hundred.
I'm not interested in doing a hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Oh, okay, that's thank you, so but what we're looking at is five hundred kilowatts.
Right.
And then just to to um. This would help me with understanding scale. There's the site that is along the West River Trail, I guess it's really along Route ninety one. How many kilowatts is that site? Do you know which one I'm talking to about?
Um, Tom, you're on mute, do you want you want to answer that question?
Yeah, I think New Chapter is in the name of that array, I don't know if they own it, but it's.
There's two arrays there, and I'm wondering if either Andy or Ralph may know, otherwise we can do some backgrounds, looking it up. So there is one near New Chapter.
Looks like Ralph can answer that question, Ralph, you want to go ahead?
Can you see me? Because I I put my hand up.
Yeah, no, I I'm that's why I called on you, I can see your.
Okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, I can just confirm that the one behind New Chapter that's down on sort of a bench above the West River. Uh, which you can see down to your right as you're going north on ninety one is five hundred kilowatts. That's the same size as this one. Yeah, although the the panels back then could accommodate about. I don't know, seventy five or eighty percent of the power output that the that the current panels can achieve, so. You can build five hundred kilowatt arrays with with gradually smaller footprints these days compared to back then.
Great, thank you.
And the solar project that's up on the upper field adjacent to that five hundred kilowatts is two megawatts. That's uh two thousand uh kilowatts.
Great, okay. Are there other questions?
Yeah, I have one more, um, and I you know, this is something I should know already, but it um. When the solar installations are installed, does something have to be done? For how how stormwater would be moving on the site, I mean. You know, to a certain extent, the the panels are kind of like a hard surface, and then you would have rainwater. Running off and so does does stormwater management have to be done on site normally?
You know, stormwater permit is required for the site, so it's dealt with in the ordinary and customary process. That would any project. In general, if the if the area under and around the solar panels is grassed. It can receive the water from from the solar panels, so so it doesn't introduce. Higher runoff on that basis, but the project will be fully permitted for stormwater. Management.
Okay.
If I can chip in two cents here, um, there's actually some interesting innovative ways of. Seeding natives and uh pollinator friendly uh varieties. In conjunction with solar fields to perform kind of ecosystem services that enable just exactly that and. You know, uh, that's something to to recommend across the board, and there's groups that can work with developers such as. Um, integrated solar to to enable that.
And it's our intention to do that, Stephen, to make this uh attractive to wildlife.
Uh, Ralph, I think you had your hand up.
Yep, I thank you, I wanted to um just jump into the conversation here and and try to make a contribution which may or may not be valuable. But I wanted to just say a couple of things about the process here. I am a member of the Energy Committee, but I also work for Green Lantern Solar, and I've I've been. In Andy's position, probably at this point with uh with a dozen different towns going through the preferred sighting process. And there are just a couple of things I want to emphasize, one is that. It's only a feature of the net metering regulations. Other sorts of solar arrays, including bigger ones, don't even have to be subjected to um. Uh, preferred site designation processes, it it's completely irrelevant. Uh, it was sort of an add-on to the net metering regulation rule five dot one hundred. Um, I think where legislators and the Public Utility Commission reacted to concerns around the state about where arrays were being cited. Um, so there's this language in there, nine different definitions of preferred sites. Many of them are the kinds of things you would expect, like uh capped landfills, reclaimed gravel pits, brownfield sites and so forth. There's this one definition, definition seven, that uh leaves open a kind of a catch-all category where basically. Uh, if there was local and regional support for the project, then um and and the the developer obtains letters to that effect. From the Planning Commission, the Select Board and the Regional Commission, then the site can be considered a uh a preferred site. And it gets into all the logic that's already been discussed about, you know, what level of incentives you're eligible for. The other thing is that. If if the town plan is duly amended to include an enhanced energy plan. Then um the whole process that that Andy's going through right now, you know, where he's trying to obtain a letter can be avoided. Because it can be much more streamlined and much more sort of anchored in the enhanced energy plan. One of the things that I've learned in in going through this process so many times is that. You really, really have to rigorously distinguish between the site and between the project. And I think in in an ideal world, preferred sighting would only focus on the merits of the site. Um, and and yet. Issues start to come up in these kinds of conversations, and I saw both Kathy and Stephen beginning to go toward questions of. Runoff and stormwater um and uh stormwater permits and also. Uh, the question of, you know, using native species, for example, or pollinator species to seed the site once the array has been built. I would argue that those two kinds of questions are part of the category of project questions, not site questions. And and it's I know it's very difficult because the two just kind of blend together, but I think it's really important. Uh, you know, to kind of keep the process simple and straightforward, you know, and serve both the public and the and the industry. To really focus on whether or not this is a site that's appropriate. I I know it's zoned industrial, and I I heard a story at one point, I don't know if it's true or not, that that whole area there. Years ago was considered for uh the prison that ended up being located up in Springfield. In a similar relation to the highway and the uh and the exit, so I know that there have been conversations for many, many years. About doing some kind of industrial development up in that neck of the woods. The one last thing I'll add, I guess, is that. There are a lot of of questions that pertain to the site. That don't really get rigorously studied and and reported on to the public. Until the certificate of public good application is submitted, and that's things like whether or not there are wetlands. And whether or not there are are headwaters and floodways and and rare and rare threatened and endangered species and deer yard and bats and all that kind of thing. And so there's a kind of a catch twenty-two in this process, because most developers have not gone through that full process. Um, when they request letters for preferred sighting. Uh, because it comes a little bit later in the process, and it really belongs to the CPG application process, not not getting a um. Uh, a letter of a a letter from the Planning Commission, Select Board and so forth, so it's it's a it's a kind of, it's a catch twenty-two, it's a. It's a an area of information that public bodies just have to do without at this stage in the process. Um, because it will come in due course, you know, as full of the as part of the fully mandated CPG application. Uh, so so my recommendation is really focus on the merits of the site, and this site, you know, seems to have a a history of being considered for industrial development. Um, and the last thing I'll just add is that when, you know, if and when the town of Bradleboro decides to. Create an enhanced energy plan. Uh, the process that Andy's going through right now will be very much simplified, because there will there will actually be a framework in place. For considering requests for preferred sighting, if that's still an issue in in solar development. And the two, there's a sort of a fork in the road here that I've seen towns go in different directions on, and that is. In the Enhanced Energy Plan, um, one way of dealing with preferred location of of energy projects in the town. Is to simply set up a series of criteria, like a checklist of criteria that a project would have to meet in order to be considered. Preferred, you know, supported by the community. Some towns, though, actually take a different route and and try to list all of the sites in the town. All the parcels that would be appropriate for solar development, and Bennington has done that, uh Stamford has done that. Um, Stamford is very simple, because it's a very small town and there's there are just a couple of sites on that list. Uh, it's been very complicated for Bennington to try to implement, because it gets political, so again, my recommendation when that process happens, I hope it does. Uh, is to focus more on general criteria uh that different sites have to be compared against as opposed to. Uh, identifying sites. That's all that I wanted to say, although I may have raised a a question that, you know, I'm happy to to answer if if I didn't cover it adequately.
So are there other questions for Andy? I think um we might want to. Follow Ralph's advice and 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 pay particular attention to the site, I mean, the 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 if we turn it over to a preferred designation. Solar, then it then it's not industrial. Um, and that's the principle, I think that's the principal issue that the Planning Commission, since that's what we do, is um. Plan, plan, plan the use of our land. So so do we want to discuss that, or do people have comments on that in particular, or questions about that? Or or anything having anything else having to do directly with the site?
And Felicity, why do you say that it's it's no longer industrial?
Well, I guess I guess you couldn't, I mean, if you're gonna put, I'm saying there there will be a structure there, and so you won't be putting another structure there. In other words, once you put the solar array up, that will be where the solar array will be, so there won't be anything else there.
It is my intention that on the site, I will also put a warehouse and office building for our operations. That's not part of this preferred solar site request, but that is an industrial building. Not a large building that will be built on the site.
So then it's actually important that it's an industrial that is zoned industrial for you for your project.
Uh, specifically targeting that, yes.
Okay.
Felicity, to to my two cents and to give a a metaphor, if uh there was a small. Uh biomass plant uh producing five hundred KW kilowatts of energy. Uh, to me, that's an industrial use, we're talking about power generation uh and going into the grid, it's just uh. It looks a little different than we're used to, and it's um it's important that we recognize uh passive industry. Based on renewables in this way as just as industrial. We're just harnessing the industry of the environment essentially and not having a giant power plant on the site, which is a better use in my mind. Uh, in terms of industrial zoning.
So I saw your head, your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that um when Andrew reviewed the land use regulation, he pointed out that utility structures are actually permitted. Uses in the industrial zoning district, um, so I would argue that this is an industrial use of that scale and. Again, because it's energy production and it's going to be connected um in various ways that it is an industrial use. And I just wanted to give you a little context to the zoning change. Uh, Ralph is correct, this, I'm not sure if it was this particular parcel or if it was the adjacent parcel, but this area was looked at for a state prison. Point in the not-too-distant future, um, or not-too, did I say that right, anyway, um. We, the Planning Commission decided in two thousand fifteen to recommend this property as industrial zoning. Um, it had previously been a rural residential or or something along that line, definitely geared towards residential. Um, the reason we made that change is um, once the Delta Campus went in and in particular Commonwealth Dairy. Uh, there was a lot of truck traffic happening down this way, and so kind of the character of this area was changing. We also recognized that there were a lot of constraints on this property that would make it really expensive to develop residential. Which isn't to say that it wouldn't be really expensive to develop industrially, but we felt like it, you know. There might be somebody that could come in and put in a driveway and and um. Get the return on the investment, um, if it was an industrial uh designation, and then the other piece was. A lot of our industrial zoned lands, we had determined were very small um lot sizes and couldn't handle larger development. Um, you know, that that needed more land or for clearing and, you know, all the accessory uses on on an industrial site, so. We were looking for some larger pieces and that's, you know, had good access to ninety one, it has three phase power. So that's why it made the move from residential, rural residential to industrial, so those are some things about the site that you might want to consider. For. For this preferred site. Potential designation.
So commissioners, do you have more? Do you need more information?
I have a wacky question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at this and the size of that solar array, and then I'm looking at that kind of little bit of. What is almost like wasteland that is in the circle of the roundabout. Um, and curious about, you know, uh, solar sighting, the possibility of solar sighting in spaces like that. Which are, you know, by the by the nature of the roads are sort of disconnected from other forested areas and. Just don't know if those are feasible sites, i- you know, you're I I in thinking of the preferred sites and sort of the larger question. I was thinking, well, why wouldn't we want to just fill that whole circle with solar? But I feel like there's a lot I don't know about that, so that's a question.
Good idea, in Germany, they they place solar in the medians of highways, so along that lines. That little circle unfortunately has a lot of ledge in it and topographical issues, but but it's a good idea.
So how about the rest of you? Tom?
I I don't have any questions, I'm kind of waiting to to weigh in and and give some comments before we decide.
I think now would be the time for you to do that, then.
Okay. Yeah, I I feel pretty mixed about this, um. Yeah, I, I feel pretty mixed about this. Um, it's, it's hard for me to, to just be gung ho about it. Um, I feel like I, I can see a lot of benefits, like people are saying, the, the three phase power, the proximity to 91, it's zoned industrial. We want to meet our solar goals. But it's just, it just seems to go against the whole intent of preferred sites. We're clearing forest for, for, for a solar power plant when the town is just full of, you know, um, of, of parking lots and building tops and, and fields that are already cleared. Now I realize, you know, uh, it's hard to acquire property and hard to get agreements and leases and everything, but it just, um, yeah, it goes, it goes against the intent. I, I, I shared that document from the DEC that, that shows their stated intent of the preferred site um, program, which or designation, which is to protect green space and to incentivize um, um, power development in, in preferred locations. So, I mean, I, I, by, by giving this the best incentive, um, I, it's, I, it's setting the wrong precedent for how solar is gonna, you know, be expanded. Um, I, I, I really hate to, you know, put a um, a damper on it because we need solar, but I, I just, I think it's the wrong way. I mean, I think if 500 kilowatts can be put there um, without the incentive, then then that's fine and like a decent compromise, but as far as giving it the most preferential treatment, I, it's, it's not a preferential site in my mind.
And so can I respond to that?
Please.
And so the comprehensive energy plan for the state is identified in to meet the 90% renewables by 2050 goal. The state is gonna have to develop between 1,500 and 2,250 megawatts of solar. They, they point out that that would require between uh, 8,000 and 13,000 acres of land uh, it cleared or otherwise made available for solar development. That, those numbers amount to as much as 62 megawatts of power every year for the next 30 years. And to, to put that into perspective, in 2016, the total solar install base and all projects under permitting amounted to 120 megawatts. So we're gonna grow from 120 megawatts to as much as 2,250 megawatts in 30 years. This is a very tall order and it's gonna require the clearing of land. And, and the CEP points out that this need and, and this allocation of 8,000 to 13,000 acres is entirely reasonable. Given that's a very small percentage of our, our available land. That, that's in Vermont and given the fact that you're not nearly gonna meet that objective by developing on gravel pits, closed landfills, rooftops, carports, et cetera. So, so this project is exactly what the CEP and the PUC rule is entertaining. This is consistent with what state policy is trying to do.
Sue.
I have such a hard time with Zoom and where I mute myself. I apologize. Thanks for catching my hand. I also wanted to add um, that the preferred sites came out of uh, as Andy was saying, the PUC. Tom, the document that you shared came from the Department of Environmental Conservation and is specifically geared to how they're gonna handle sites of, of projects on brownfield sites and, and the capital landfills. So um, while I do think that part of the goal is to, you know, stop kind of as, as Ralph or Andy put, you know, inappropriate sightings of them. Um, I think that you just need to be careful because that was a presentation that was geared towards brownfields um, use of it and how DEC was gonna handle that.
Although as a thought experiment, if I might just raise my hand and take my hat off of the chair and just be a commissioner, um, it, I can see Tom's point that in fact, we might as well use all those parking lots we've got and build structures over the parking lots because, you know, the cars don't need to have a view. Um, I mean, what would, I guess, I guess, as, as I said, it's a thought experiment. What would be the cost of say, taking the um, parking lot that's above the hermit thrush? I don't know what the size of that lot is, but it's fairly sizable. And we've talked about that when we did the, the open space plan. Um, is it, is it pro, is it simply difficult to get permitting and prohibitively expensive to, to construct a solar array that would sit whatever 20 feet in, uh, above that lot?
Yeah, it's very expensive. That's why. That's right. If there are incentives that are created to do that, then develop, we'll move in that direction. Given the system that we have today, we have preferred solar sites in order to develop what are really modest sized projects. These, these aren't by any stretch, large projects. So, but it's driven by economics.
Okay. But you, I mean, we theoretically, I mean, at least my reading of that documentation is that a preferred site would be a parking lot.
Can I speak just briefly?
That's right.
Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
And, and this is just to say, um, not specific to any particular project. Uh, there is a definite economy of scale and that's really what we're talking about here. Uh, to be able to develop uh, parking lots, which may have, uh, you know, an acre at most uh, of, of available exposure and rooftops and to organize the agreements with all the owners uh, related therein is an individual deal with each uh, property owner. And there aren't the incentives that we're talking about here uh, to actually make it feasible in most uh, uh, conditions. And that's, that's really pretty true in terms of this large scale development that we're talking about. And it, large is only relative to solar because this is miniscule in terms of what is generated by other means of, of, of energy production, right? If you were to establish an ongoing 500, 100 kilowatt array or kilowatt generation through biomass or something else, the carbon footprint would be vastly greater than what it takes to clear the space for the array to operate ongoing for the next 30 years, which is, you know, a conservative uh, life cycle for an array. So just to say, um, the question I think that we need to wrestle with beyond Andy is if this is not a preferred site, what are preferred sites? Uh, the, the least preferred sites, as I understand it, are not in our city center, not industrially zoned, not in a lot of the categories that we're looking at this project falling into. Um, so if we do have better alternatives, I really, I, I want to help explore those with the committee and um, I, I, yeah, if there are opportunities to do that, um, we can. I'm not sure that this, in my mind, uh, falls outside of that, just to say, in my, in my opinion, which is, you know, undereducated at best to say.
I guess back, so, so I, the, the town owns the parking lots. So that's single owner. Um, the parking garage has a roof. Um, so the, you know, though that, I'm, I, I wasn't talking about putting solar on roofs. I'm, I'm saying, you know, the town owns those fairly significantly sized parking lots and, 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 but again, I said, this is, this is really a, a, a sort of clarifying, I mean, in terms of thinking, forward thinking about our, our, our intention to meet the goals that apparently we've put down as a state for 2050, that we are going to have to put solar arrays in town. We're gonna have to put them on the parking garage. We're gonna have to put them over parking lots in order to meet that goal. Um,
That's right.
We can't, we can't be cutting down forests, all those forests. We have to, we have to do what the preferred site says. I mean, we do have a brownfields next to the river where there, we've currently turned into a public park. Um, right? The, the site by the bank of the, of the Connecticut, that the, from the river to the river folks put some benches in.
Yeah, but I wouldn't be surprised if there are some structural issues to be able to put a solar array there.
Yeah.
The waste is capped on the site.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's just, I know you're mentioning.
I'm just sort of saying, you know, if it's brownfields and, and, and other cap sites and, and parking garages, we do have those. Um, but, but I, but, but, and yes, prudence.
Um, well, the parking garage, actually there's parking on the top. There's not really a roof over it. Um, it's open. It's open air up there and you know, I, I, you just, these are just examples. We, we should talk about other possible places because hopefully that river site is gonna get developed with the, you know, the bridge project and um, you know, I, there's a lot of interest in, in that as opening up the, the, the river, the riverfront. So, so hopefully there's some other ideas of places in town that, that might work for solar. Andrew.
I was gonna, it seems like kind of what this conversation is kind of going around like cathetics, like, you know, we don't want them tanks, we don't want to see them. Fact is, is that, you know, we're gonna have to start putting them in places where people can see them just to meet these goals going into the future. I don't think we all, you know, I think there's other ways you can um, mitigate the look, you know what I mean? I mean, it's not like solar, you know, solar panels are all that ugly in my opinion, but that's me. But I don't think we should just take away from the fact that they're near people that we shouldn't put them there because obviously there's good sex in areas that are near a lot of people. Um, I just thought to consider when we are, if we will look at other sites um, in the future. Um, I mean, I think it's obviously important, understand the importance, talking about it, but I also think we have certain goals as Andy has put out that we needed the state to meet, you know, less than 50 years.
Yeah, Sue.
I just have a quick point and then I want to um, have you call on Brian Bennett. I saw his hand raised at one point, but I did just want to say that while the parking lot canopies and brownfields, and we do have them in Brattleboro, Brattleboro, the definition of a preferred site does include this option. So um, I just want to point that out. They're not the only ways that you can have a preferred site. This is one way that you can.
Right, of course. I mean, that's why we're here, right? Um, Brian, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes. So Stephen visited the site and I was discussing it with him afterwards. And one of the questions was, you know, is this a mature forest or is it more recently reforested? And his observation is that it's a fairly young reforested site. And by his estimation, about 50 years since its start regrowing. So I, I think that probably contributes to the lack of natural resources on the site, the lack of wetlands, the lack of endangered species. Or any other type of environmental sensitivity. So I, I think that type of early regeneration site might also be a category of lands that might be appropriate when you folks actually get down to a more categorical approach to doing preferred sites.
Great, thank you. Um, so commissioners, yes, Ralph?
Yeah, thank you, Felicity. Um, I just wanted to um, point out one or two things. One is that again, it's a site that, that is in question here and there is, there's no prohibition in uh, rule 5 dot 1, 5 dot uh, 100 against um, forest clearing or anything else that has to do with forest cover in determining whether or not a site is a preferred site. Um, and if I might say so, those types of questions will naturally come up in the CPG application process because that's where all of the really um, heavy weighing in of A and R and Ag and Markets and DPS and uh, the Department of Historic Preservation and everybody else takes place. And that's when a, a lot more scientific, um, uh, you know, qualifications will be put to, put to work analyzing whether or not this is a, you know, a, a, an appropriate uh, permissible site from a wildlife standpoint, from a habitat block standpoint and so on and so forth. Um, the other thing too, I would imagine is that um, I, I maybe, I, I don't want to be presumptuous, but I would imagine that uh, Andy is, is also trying to um, get this project through the, the um, permitting process before we start to hit the next set of deadlines, which would drop a project like this down to an even lower level of incentives because I do know that that, that uh, if you don't get a 45 day notice out by about this coming weekend, then you're gonna miss the window for CPG applications by February 1st. And if you do that, then you are looking at, I can't remember, either one or two less cents per kilowatt hour than is currently the case for a 500 kilowatt array. So um, if, if there's no, you know, if there's no sound objection to this as a preferred site, you know, based, based in law and all that sort of thing, then um, you know, I think it's incumbent upon a planning commission and a, and a select board and a regional commission to um, you know, if, if the site itself could be seen as acceptable, um, let the project through because, you know, once again, the project is gonna have to be subjected to the whole CPG application process as well. Um, there's, in other words, there's no good reason from a legal standpoint to um, stop a, a, a request for a preferred site letter for a site like this if there's gonna be some clearing. Um, you know, as much as I personally like to preserve forests rather than, than cut it down. So, yeah.
Andrew. I, I think you're on mute. You're on mute.
Yes, thanks. Sorry about that. To follow up with that comment, um, I ate, when I was at that check, I did look at the, both the A and R atlas and the bio finder maps, looking specifically at like habitat blocks and habitat connectors. It's important to note, when the state is making those different habitat connector designations on their maps, statewide significance of perspective. Um, there is a habitat block mapped on this parcel. It has a score of four. And as you, there's a sliding scale of one to 10, 10 being the highest priority, one being the loaded. So this is just below the middle. So it's not really a high priority site to be considered into a habitat connector, which are usually, you know, larger forest lands, like mountains, for example. But that's not to take away from the fact that it's so significant site from the town's perspective. That's one thing uh, when I was talking to uh, wildlife planners to consider sometimes is that, yeah, even though the state might say not significant, doesn't mean it's not sitting into the town. It's just a thought.
But it, but if I understand Ralph correctly, that is not a discuss, that's not a point for us to be examining. That will be a later uh, question that will be raised and discussed at a, at a different gate. Is that correct?
That's true. I, I do think there's a little crossover though. I mean, if you're trying to just time it, decide if it's a preferred site, you might want to know if some of these things exist and then look to the town plan for some guidance. Um, where we don't have anything that says, and we have identified a couple of habitat blocks and maybe some connectors. This is not one of them.
Okay. I, I actually, Sue, you're reminding me that I wanted to remind the commissioners of our values, um, when we're, especially when we're making a decision uh, of some import. Um, so if, if, if people don't have your values in front of you, um, I'm happy to read them off to remind us. Yes, all right. So belonging, creative innovation, connectivity, vitality, diversity, sustainability, togetherness, happiness, equity, equality and ownership. So are we ready to, to um, make a motion? I guess we need a motion and uh, and then a vote. Somebody want to make a motion?
Can I ask one question before we make a motion?
Yeah.
Do you think, given that we have not, one thought is that it seems that we should maybe move this one thought is that it seems that we should maybe move this further up on the list of things to do is actually kind of look at the town and start to identify some standards for how we would choose preferred sites. But given that that is not in place, if we were to decide that this is a preferred site, does that somehow set a precedent for the town or for our future decision-making process? And would it be prudent to end the decision-making process now to set some criteria or reasons why we would designate this a preferred site or would not designate it just to kind of document those reasons?
Sue.
I don't think that it necessarily sets a precedent because I think each case, you know, has its own merits. However, if you did decide that this was going to be a preferred site, that you supported it, I would like to know what are the factors that made you support it? Because I will need to write a memo to the select board because the next step would be to the select board. So I would be letting them know that the planning commission determined it, you know, that it was acceptable as a preferred site and here's why. Because they're gonna need to discuss it as well.
Kathy, to answer another, another aspect of your question, I think that if, if we did decide that it was a preferred site, but we didn't think that we wanted the preferred sites in the future to have these criteria. In other words, I mean, I'm just particularly thinking about what Tom said of the clearing and preserving our green spaces, even though it feels like we have a lot of them. They certainly go quickly. That we might put in a memo that said, we're doing this now, but we, we plan in the future to put together a more robust solar array planning document that would include a a different kind of definition of what we think of as preferred sites. I mean, I don't think we're, we're not, we're not, we're not constraining ourselves to anything, provided we leave a written record that can be utilized by the next planning commission in their decision-making process. So are we ready to take this to a vote?
Felicity, Dory raised his hand.
Yeah, Dory, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
That's all right. So, yeah, I think, yeah, I think we kinda have to, if we're trying to meet this, this level of solar by a certain point, we will have to both think sort of inside the box of what we can do and outside the box of that there will be some clearing, and some clearing in certain spots, especially if they're already industrially zoned, seems to make sense. I always, being born and raised, do like never wanna see, you know, the woods cut for, but also understanding that like we need to be sort of a leader in solar, especially because we live in such a green state. So, yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, that it, I think that the talking about the preferred spot, I think we, we, it does behoove us to kind of move forward with projects like this. And I think obviously because they're case by case, but also talk about the fact that like, you know, how much, how can we begin to look at things the way Europe does? To like to do, to like to solarize our medians, to like make space that's not, will not be lived in or used by animals or so. Uh, yeah, so I guess the saying that we can kind of do both because we do need to make a move with as much solar as we can, especially if we're using industrial sites that seem to make sense.
Prudence, do you wanna make a motion?
Okay, sure. I move that that we designate this parcel as a preferred solar site because it's an industrial zoned area. It has three-phase power and and the slope of the, of the land in question makes perhaps other development less likely.
Is there a second? Second, okay. Is there any further discussion or shall we take the vote?
Can you tell me who seconded?
Kathy seconded.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. And those opposed? Tom is opposed. Prudence, Dory and Kathy and I are in support. Are there abstentions? No, because that was all the commissioners. So is that sufficient? Do we need everybody?
I just wanna acknowledge Tom's humanity and reach out to you and say like, I feel you. But my thought process is since it's zoned industrial, like we would have very little oversight if some other industry wanted to come in and develop this parcel. So I, to me, because it's zoned industrial and we wouldn't have that oversight, you know, I'd, I'd rather see solar on it than possibly many other things. So.
Actually, and I was, Tom, I agreed with you too. And I was going down the same line as Kathy is that like if it's already zoned industrial, I don't want, I'd rather solar than some other form of industrial because it'll be, actually go towards a decent thing.
So, so can I follow up? Because I certainly agree with what, with what Kathy and Dory have said. I, I wonder is it, it would be too much to, to follow this motion with a, with an additional motion that constrains the planning commission to actually do something about designating preferred solar sites and in, in the so that we're not faced with the, with this sorts of situation again and, and see if we can't get some action around the notion of actually doing the European thing and putting solar arrays over places, over concrete and asphalt and parked cars as opposed to places where deer and squirrels and other sorts of beings have their homes.
Yeah, do, I don't know that we need to, I mean, I think Felicity, you're the chair, so just make it a priority. But I, I would with the energy committee so that we have access to, I feel like there's a lot here I don't understand. And so I feel like having access to some of that expertise would be helpful.
That was gonna be my two cents as well, actually, that we have a little joint huddle to talk about what it could look like to, to have a smoother process and criteria for this, this kind of designation. So we can follow up by email on that. And I wanna just appreciate Ralph for showing up as a, you know, experienced member of the energy committee. I requested that he come in a sense. And, and I'm, I'm glad that, that we've reached this conclusion. I think it is best for the town.
I just wanna add to, I, I was gonna suggest that the energy committee get involved. We might wanna look at the entire enhanced energy planning process together. And, you know, they're a good committee to work with as well as maybe the conservation commission if we're trying to come up with criteria that we're gonna use for preferred solar sites.
Yeah, and I, I just, I wanna follow up by saying, I mean, I think the town, you know, we've, we've, we've tried to work on zoning now for almost a year and we haven't, we haven't managed to do it. So I think if the commission really feels like they wanna do this, then, then it, it's more, it's gonna take more than just me being the chair. I think it's gonna take all of us agreeing that this is gonna be a priority and we should set a date for when we're gonna have these meetings and by which time, I would say a year from today, when we actually have an enhanced plan that designates the criteria for preferred solar. And, and figure out routes for, for convincing the powers that be to, to put out the money or create the incentives to, to put solar on, on, on roofs and over parking lots. Yes, Ralph?
Wait, just a minute here. There we go. Yeah, I, I really, I like what I've heard and, and what Stephen brought up and I, I very much enjoy and appreciate working with the planning commission on an enhanced energy plan, or at least on criteria to start the process. What I wanted to note though, because this has come up, is that our company actually had a contract, we had a letter of intent with the town that ran out about a year ago to, to explore putting solar on top of the parking garage on Flat Street. And we were envisioning a one hundred and fifty kilowatt array. We hired a structural engineer and began the process of, of trying to turn that into a project. And with the added costs of materials and working at height and the issues of displacing a few parking spaces and so forth, we just couldn't get it to work economically. And that was with incentives a couple of years ago that are actually better than they are at this moment. And I'm afraid that if you looked around the town, parking lots and other sort of, you know, wasted areas where in theory, it would make perfect sense to put a solar array. But in reality, you, you could just never, to work economically, you couldn't get it financed. And unfortunately, that's a, that's a of the, the policies at both the federal and the state level that we, we have to deal with at the moment. I, I have a graphic, I can, I can send it around in case anybody wants to see it that was done by one of our competitors. That shows literally a collapse in solar development of, of new capacity brought online each year over the past six years. And it's, but it's, it's just the, the direction that the policy is pushing us in. Anyway, I look forward to, to working on this some more.
Great, okay. So Andy, thanks for coming. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
And I think we have our next item on the agenda is land use regulations.
I just wanna let Andy know, I'll reach out to you tomorrow about next steps, but it's likely to be on the December fifteenth select board agenda. And I'll need to figure out how, with the town manager, how he wants to have it presented.
Sue, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, Sue, do you wanna walk us through the land use regulation amendments?
Sorry, I have so many screens open. I'm a little flustered with it. So at the last meeting, we had talked about wanting to make time and kind of figure out a schedule to move forward with the land use regulations, some of which have been talked about over the years that we just have never taken to a public hearing. There's a couple that Tom had suggested when we were talking about housing. There's a list that Andrew put together, a pretty complete list of actions that the planning commission has taken over the years. And then we know that we have a couple that will be coming up. And I don't know if, if Brian is still on the call.
It looks like he's here.
I'm wondering if we can start with Brian, talking a little bit about the flood hazard amendments that we're gonna need to make. Which is funny, they go into effect January first, but we don't even know what they are. So if I can have Brian speak to that, that way he doesn't have to stay on if he doesn't want to unless you, you're planning on staying on, Brian.
Should I get into it? Yeah, so the community ratings system is changing their prerequisites so we can stay a class eight. They're changing it across the board. One of those changes is going to be that they're calling for at a minimum a one-foot preboard. So residences have to be elevated at least one foot above base flood elevation. And industrial structures or commercial structures have to be floodproof to at least one foot above base flood elevation. We already do that, but they're also requiring that mechanical systems be elevated to one foot above base flood elevation, even in floodproof buildings. So that's a change and we have to also tidy up our definition of utilities. So it's clear that we're not talking about utilities and machinery in the same category. And then there's a question of whether this is also gonna apply to mobile homes and existing mobile home parks. It's seems like the preliminary language is saying, yes, it is. But again, FEMA isn't gonna release the final wording on the regulations probably until the end of December. And they, they'll, they'll come into effect on January first.
Brian, can I ask a question about the utilities?
Yeah.
And the flood proof, or having those elevated one foot above B F E. So we can have that in our regulations, but I mean, I walked Frost Street after, after Irene, and there's a lot of utilities in basements. So are there any incentives for businesses or even residents to, that we can help people make those changes? Because it's gonna be tough for them if they come through with a land use permit and they're not in compliance. It's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, so this is only gonna apply to new construction and substantially improved construction. So where structure is improved by fifty percent or more of its value. So it'll apply to larger projects on people's buildings when they're already making a large, large-scale investment. And of course, it will also apply if buildings are substantially damaged. And that's definitely gonna be where it's gonna be hardest. If they're substantially damaged, it's likely there'll be a declared disaster and we'll be able to help people apply for hazard mitigation grants. And those would pay for seventy-five percent of the cost of any mitigation project. But, you know, existing, existing system would, would be grandfathered until such time as they had that type of improvement.
Okay, so all we have to do is wait for that. Yes, Prudence, you have a question?
Could, yeah, could you just repeat, it's one foot above, can you say what that term is again?
Yes, it's base flood elevation. And base flood elevation is the expected level of floods for a hundred-year or one percent flood event. It's also called the design flood level. And one foot above base elevation is important because the flood hazard regulations allow the flood plain to be filled to the point where the pre-development level of floods actually increases by one foot. So if people fill the flood plain as much as regulations allow, then ultimately flood waters will be one foot higher. So that free board requirement actually compensates for that. So conforming buildings won't get flooded.
Thank you. I have one other question, Brian, since you're here tonight. If this is gonna apply to mobile homes, we know that there's properties in Tri-Park and Glen Park that are relatively low. I mean, many feet below base flood elevation. Can you talk a little bit about what that would mean for redevelopment in the park? Or for somebody that comes through and wants to build a, you know, a porch or a, you know, screen dim porch or something on their property?
Yeah, so this is, it's gonna impact mobile homes in the flood fringe. There are quite a number of mobile homes in the floodway and those ones really can't be improved and, except for minor repairs. The ones in the flood fringe, though, they could be replaced. And, you know, currently they can be elevated to four feet above grade. So it's likely that that wouldn't actually be one foot above base flood elevation for large areas around Valley Street, Edgewood, Woodville. And homes there, they probably have to be elevated on a full foundation. So generally what they would do at that point is put a garage under the house for storage. It would be a very different development path than what they have now.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're on to regulations relating to housing.
There's just one point I wanna make that can maybe drive the entire conversation. So we are expecting a community rating system, which Brian talked about, the CRS. We're expecting a visit in June, which means we will need to have the amendments to the flood hazard regulations approved by then or passed. So that kind of affects the timeline for bringing forward the rest of these amendments. So it's probably a good thing because it puts it on a timeline, but.
So that's June. We need to get all this done by June.
We have to have it adopted by June, which means two planning commission public hearings, two select board public hearings. So we really probably need to wrap everything up that we're gonna put forward by March.
March, so that's, that's, that's two, yeah, three meetings. March, so that's, that's, that's three meetings, two, yeah, three meetings.
Yeah. I think it's doable, um, as long as when we review the other stuff that that's acceptable. Yeah, it's, it's a pretty tight timeline um, if we're going to make, make the, make it for the CRS.
Right, which we, I mean, we might as well do. We've been, we have been saying that we needed to get this show on the road. Um, and so we might as well push ourselves. And there isn't necessarily anything else more pressing that we need to do. Um, the, the, the open space plan is, is going to run itself, right? I mean, we, we don't need to be doing that. And um, and yeah, we, I mean, we do need to be looking at solar, but, but my, my sense is that that's going to be a multi-pronged attack um, at the state and federal level to, to push that into a different place. But so, so can you, can you sort of divide up what it is that we need to do? And then we can sketch out the plan for getting it done?
Yes, so um, I think that essentially we just need to figure out what are the amendments that we're putting forward. We have a couple that Tom has proposed, I think probably last June, that we've never, never got around to talking to. So I would like to do that tonight. And then we'll pull the language on the list that Andrew put together of um, various regulation changes on which the planning commission had discussed and we're good at or good with. Um, obviously you'll need to take a look at them again, but hopefully we don't spend too much time. We've just put our, you know, put our values at work and say, does this still really work um, for us? And then, so hopefully that can be a quick kind of one night on the existing ones that have been approved. So you know, we'll wrap it up and then we'll have some public hearings and then we'll pass it along to the select board um, for public hearing. So I think it's entirely doable to do by June. It just, it becomes the priority.
So Tom, you want to present your idea? Because is that what we're going to talk about tonight?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, I'd love to. Good thing, good thing I summarized my opinion on those three things in the document right on it. So I don't have to remember my thoughts way back from half a year ago.
Tom, would you like me to share it on the screen?
Oh, yeah, please. Please, and and go to the last page, I'd actually like to work backwards.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll talk a little bit if I can recall my, my thinking for choosing that section was actually kind of random. As, I mean, we were talking about housing and housing changes. I didn't choose the one and only section of our land use regs that I think um, needs some changes. Maybe it is, but I just, I, I, for whatever reason, I opened up to this page. It was probably prompted by something, you know, to the section, section three hundred and three. And I just started going down it. It's only several pages, but this document skips a few of them, three, three dash seven, three dash eight. Yeah, I just read through them and 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 saw, I thought they made sense to me and to um, you know, diverse uses of lodging. And you know, that seemed reasonable and um, for different sorts of people's um, proclivities. So going to the last one, um, I think it's important to note that, that we don't have a definition of campgrounds. I couldn't find one. So I presume that this isn't just a business campground, it could be private as well. It could be for money or it could be not. It, it could be. It could have ten campsites on it or twenty, or it could have one potentially. I think it's written as if it's a business, but, but anyway, e- e- even if it is just for businesses, what it reads to me is that camping in, you know, one might say, who wants to be in a tent in the winter? But this is, it's also saying that cabins, like the ones pictured there, which could potentially draw residents and local Vermonters and tourists alike, is actually illegal. It's not allowed here in Brattleboro. So um, I think, I wonder what the rationale was for writing that. I wonder if it was an oversight or um, it seems, it seems pretty silly to me. I mean, I know people can get cold, but presumably these cabins would be built with, with heating systems. And it would be a self-filtering process, the ones, people who reserve them. So um, I think that we should allow cabins through all seasons. Your um, occupancy, you know, um, temporary visitation occupancy in cabins year round. What do you all think?
So I guess I have a question, which is, is there, when you say temporary occupancy, I mean, does, does a campsite by definition mean temporary?
I don't know, I don't know what the length of stay um, rules around a campground are. I don't know if we consider it, maybe, maybe we don't have any rules around it. I don't know. It's probably controlled at the state level.
I mean, because it just, I mean, I think there's presumably a reason, probably it's a health. I mean, it, you know, it's undoubtedly a health hazard. I mean, this, some of these regulations are around protecting people from each other, right? That some unscrupulous landlord would create a hovel and then rent it to a person uh, through the, through the winter, and that person would be in, 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 in an uninhabitable, essentially uninhabitable place, but it would be affordable and so they would stay there. So presume, I mean, that, that must be the reason why this is, because otherwise it seemed, as you say, seems rather sort of ridiculous. But, but if there was a component that we put in there that it was temporary, that seems like it would make sense. Sue, you look like you wanted to say something.
Well, I was going to say we're fortunate to still have Brian on here and maybe he can um, shed some light on campgrounds. Um, uh, but I would just add that I wouldn't assume that it's in here for a reason um, necessarily. I mean, we did, this was wholesale. And so there are probably parts that kind of escaped us. I remember before the last meeting looking up state regulations. And I think it really applied to what I could find, applied to some of the state campgrounds closing, you know, operating in these um, in this period. So I can't really speak to why it's there, but maybe Brian can shed some light. And then after Brian, I would point out that Dory has his hand raised. I don't know if you're seeing the hand raises.
Okay, I'm not seeing the hand raise, but I'll, I'll, I'll go back to bigger, bigger screen. Yeah, um, Brian?
Sure, so this prohibition is really only applying to that type of structure when it's in a campground. And this particular section only applies to lodging structures. So it's, it's really just a way of making sure that campgrounds don't turn into permanent housing developments. And if people did want to convert a campground into a permanent housing development, they could do so as a cottage cluster development. And you know, that would be fine. It probably would have somewhat different state wastewater permitting issues, but you know, that's not something we would actually approach. But this isn't a blanket prohibition against either cabins or wintertime use of cabins.
Oh, okay, so.
But it is if it's in a business campground?
Yeah, it, it's, it is if it's a lodging establishment. And you know, it, this has come up at Camp Wabinog where they converted some of their, you know, summertime cabins are really, at this point, residences and which isn't terrible, but they don't actually have a wastewater system that's designed for that. So you know, there's that disjuncture.
Okay, Dory?
Um, so yeah, I just had a question about, uh, I mean, is there a way to, to change this wording with this wording in terms of like businesses? Um, or and rental or uh, businesses in terms of like uh, hotels and or like uh, bigger rental units as opposed to like private land? Uh, because I'm just knowing the fact that Vermont's housing availability is so small uh, right now. And that people that are uh, in terms of like cabins, campsites that are more built up uh, are far better than say being uh, the homeless, people that say live in yurts or non-traditional housing. Obviously that does get into a whole bunch of other problems, but yeah. Yeah, the fact that is uh, illegal uh, five months of the year, considering that that housing is so tight. Um, I feel like uh, some aspects like this should be uh, the areas that we kind of concentrate on, on either, on, on relaxing. As long as it's not, yeah, as long as it doesn't get into sort of the predator landlord, like that's the point to block. So how do we change the wording to block the predator predatory landlords and allow people that need a place to stay? Or and or want to live non, uh, less traditionally, um, give them the ability to have housing.
But we also need to make sure that they have, that the, the land has the necessary resources. As, I mean, Brian, you made a mention of wastewater treatment, obviously. That's, that's, that kind of infrastructure is key.
Yeah, and I think what you wanted to ensure is that if people want to turn cabins or campgrounds into a residential development, which you know, again, is fine, that the change of use is actually reviewed and they get their state permits to do any upgrades that are necessary for wastewater. And I think water supply, that when it changes, regulated similarly, it would be considered public water supply. So it's really only the sewage disposal systems that they'd have to look at.
Uh, Prudence, did you add your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have a little camping trailer and spend some time in campgrounds. And uh, the infrastructure, for the most part, I mean, they're, they're not, it's not a four-season infrastructure in these campgrounds. The, you know, the water lines usually aren't buried. And you know, I, I think we would, you know, we would want to be careful that we didn't encourage some kind of a uh, developments that would allow for substandard housing or, you know, dangerous, dangerous situations.
So can I just go back, Tom? In our, is what you imagine the sort of notion that these, that these would be uh, camps? Um, and they would be winterized? And this would be a kind of not necessarily uh, an addition to our housing stock, but more in addition to the uh, the opportunity to make money but from visitors by having them come twelve months out of the year?
Yes, yes, exactly.
So then I, then I, I guess the question is, is there a way that we can say, change this regulation so that we make sure that it's camping and temporary? And doesn't put undue stress on the infrastructure, but it does allow for people to camp in the winter? So that's, that, that's essentially what you're looking to be able to do, right?
Right, yeah, I mean, the way I read that, it was good that Brian clarified that, that this doesn't apply to um, you know, to a single-family residence that has a, an um, a cabin on the side that they, that they rent with Airbnb. It just applies to, I think, business campgrounds, which, which we don't define. So there's still um, uh, muddiness around that. But in, in general, I understand what a business campground is. And, and I, I, I think it's reasonable and, and to make an allowance for, for visitors, not, not to reside, but to visit and stay in a, in cabins through the winter at a business campground here in Brattleboro. If such a business, you know, wanted to start. Be created.
Sue?
I, I don't have a problem with that. I think though that I do want to look at the state permitting and make sure that any wastewater permits that they receive are indicating the, the, you know, season of operation. Because I do agree with Prudence, most of the campgrounds that I know, you know, their systems couldn't, couldn't operate in the cold. You know, they're, they're pretty rudimentary. So I think we probably want to just take a look at what are they looking at at the state level? And then I don't have an issue with it being year-round camping.
Yeah, and just to give a little possibility, I mean, um, it, it could be that a campground, let's say, has ten of these. Maybe that look like in the picture. And then there's one building close by to all of them that has the water and the, and the sewage. So that would make weatherization, you know, feasible for the whole, the whole development.
Okay, so, so is it okay to just leave that with Sue to, to look into the state regs?
Yeah, yeah, it seems like she knows.
Okay, great. Kathy, welcome back.
I've been here, I'm just multitasking with the kids and I got a little bowl of ice cream.
Yeah, I was just joshing with you because it looked like you had just devoured something delicious. All right, uh, onto the next image, next concept?
Yeah, so, so if we're, yep, yeah, that's a good um, good orientation. Yeah, so, so if we're um, being very precautious with not encouraging substandard housing, I wonder how, how we're going to take this one? So, so this all comes from um, the, the changes or the three outlined parts, which I'm basically proposing to not, not mandate, to maybe just remove. Um, come from my personal experience, I guess it was about ten years ago, when I went to grad school in Amherst, Mass. And, and I lived in a building which um, fits this category, I believe, single-room occupancy facility. But it didn't, it didn't comply with, with C or, or E or F. And I found it to be a fine living space. I mean, it was close to a laundromat, so the building didn't need a, an additional room for laundry facilities. I was never in charge, I mean, there was no expectation on me or needs to clean the common spaces. So I didn't need access to a, to a, to a cleaning supply room or utility closet. And, and, and none of us, you know, really had the desire to associate with each other. And I mean, we said hi as we came and went, but we didn't need a whole nother room per floor, you know, with sofas. So, and, and as a result, this was the cheapest um, rental that I had ever heard of in Amherst at that time. And it was fine and clean and there were shared bathrooms. Um, the building was cleaned um, by um, you know, a, a house cleaner came weekly. And um, yeah, the location was right downtown. There was, there was parking around back and bicycle um, uh, stations. You know, it didn't have everything that, that maybe we, that all the conveniences that, that people can want, but it was, it was totally adequate and sanitary and enough. So I'm proposing to, to scale back on those three requirements. And then maybe something will pop up here like was there in Amherst and and then people will have more housing possibilities at, at lower prices.
Is there a discussion of that?
I have a question. Sue?
Uh, go ahead, Andrew, and then Brian.
Um, I'm not sure, but does anyone know if any of these bigger apartment complexes like a snow block? Or some developments downtown, is there a facility on site? I'm, I'm curious what the, like the twenty-plus unit apartment books, um, if they have those facilities. I know like apartments in town don't have their own laundry, for example. You know, you got to go to the laundry. So I was thinking of if some of these larger developments, so they have laundry, not saying that we, if there's anything regulations now. You know, maybe it shouldn't, like Tom was saying, it doesn't need to be requirement. I, I'm just curious just for comparison, that's all.
So um, it depends on the development. So like the snow block on Flat Street has um, laundry facilities, but not one on every floor. There's like one for the building, I'm pretty sure. And you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, Red Clover Commons, I believe, you know, newer development, larger, has laundry facilities on each floor. So it really just depends on the development.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Prudence, I'm sorry, Brian, and then Prudence.
Oh, just wanted to back up what Tom was saying. I also was in an SRO during grad school. It was really straightforward. The only thing that I thought was really important was that it did have a resident manager. And that was in return for her rent. So yeah, the rest is really superfluous. And I also didn't want to hang around with the other people in the building. So I think that's actually pretty common.
Prudence?
I was just going to answer the question about the snow block, which already was answered. Yeah, I mean, I think laundry facilities on each floor is excessive. In my, Um, in my. I guess we should, we could talk about whether there should be uh one in the, you know, in the building. Um, but but the common space on each floor, the the laundry and each floor does seem excessive.
Um, yeah, I mean, I I in terms of energy use, it does seem to me that the possibility that that, you know. I don't know, laundry facilities on every floor seems excessive to me. One seems nice, but if it's but if it's located within walking distance of another of a laundromat, then. That seems acceptable.
Not to mention, these are usually smaller buildings, so, yeah, having one on every floor seems, does seem excessive. Dorian has his hand up.
Dorian. Dorian.
Yeah, I can tell you my my whole building has zero laundry. Uh, we would love one on any floor, uh so I think the idea that there's at least some laundry facilities is great that need. For it to be on every floor, if it's restrictive, I can see uh doing away with. Also, it's great to have a common room, uh I feel like, yeah, a common room on every floor does not need to be. Uh, had, I think it's like, it's kind of thing, it's like, if the common rooms by where the laundry is, so you have a place to hang out while your laundry is going on. Great, like that style of thing, um, I think in terms of the cleaning supply room, I think that's if. Uh, to make sure there there's water accessible outside of a bathroom space, I think that's the. The if it's single, single uh occupancy spaces, so at least that's what my guess of what it is. So if, say, the bathroom is occupied, you have an aspect of like uh filling a hot water kettle. Uh, something of the sort. No?
No, cuz there there's a line about kitchens, it says if each room isn't provided with a kitchen facilities, then. Then that needs to be provided for each floor as well.
Okay, yeah, so that same same, it's like, as long as there's access to something like that, like uh in the whole building. Uh, that there's an access to uh a cleaning facility, uh so on and so forth, it doesn't need to be on every floor. I agree.
So do we have, just as a sort of point of information, um to to Brian's point. We have these very strict regulations about about space, do we have any regulations that say? Again, thinking about the predatory landlord that say that there will be an office, a building manager, so if you do have a building that has minimum. Uh, amenities, that it doesn't. Doesn't become a place where people can't get like a building, the building manager obviously is. Make sure that the building stays well kept, like what you were saying, Tom, about it was a nice, clean space and it was. People, you know, treated it well.
Yeah, it does require, the regulations do require a resident manager.
All right, well then. So is this the kind of thing that we can move on right away, or can we just sort of say we 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 agree with this and move on and then we'll vote? Every when we change regulations, we can vote them all at a at a and as a block. What would you recommend about that, Sue?
Yeah, I think that's fine, we can um, you know, move on this at another point, I think, I have a couple of questions, I just wanna clarify. Um, about what you want removed out of this, um, because there was just some talk about the kitchen and having a full kitchen on every floor seems. Seems to me to be excessive if we're saying a laundry on every floor is, so I'm just trying to figure out. We don't wanna require laundry on every floor, but do we want laundry in the building? Or are we gonna leave that up to the property owner?
How many laundromats have we got in Rattleboro?
Not very many, a lot of them have closed.
Yeah, one on Petty Road and I believe one on Canal Street, um. Yeah, and one in West Rattleboro.
Um, I was gonna say that that's something that would be wonderful, that's, I think it's, that becomes a burden on the poor. Um, the ability to get your laundry to a place, ability to have transportation to get your laundry to a place, ability to spend an entire day. Out in the laundromat, uh doing your laundry, I think the ability, like having laundry in your building is definite. Uh, feels very important, um, on every floor it doesn't, but in your or access to in your building attached to it some for. Seems very important.
Okay.
And I, while I'm speaking, I'd like, um. Well, i- if, what we've, how do we feel about the cleaning supply room, is that necessary at all?
I mean, you have a person who comes to clean, right?
Right, yeah, exactly, so cross that out.
Well, just that they need someplace to be able to fill a bucket full of water to mop with and stuff like that, so. You probably, you know, the building would need to have something beyond what was just in each room, I think.
Oh, right.
Well, in the laundromat, there's gonna be an, there's gonna be an industrial sink.
In the laundry room, right?
Yeah.
Or the or the bathrooms.
Right.
Okay.
So, yes, we want a, I think, do we want one in the building? Or one in every floor?
One in the building.
One in the building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, w- we want one, what, are we talking about the laundry or the cleaning room?
The laundry. Oh, well, I mean, I was imagining that you don't necessarily have to have a separate room, but you should have a a a a a sink.
Right.
Um, that can, you know, because the cleaning person isn't gonna just arrive with. With it with the bucket full of water and soapy fluid, I mean, they're gonna have to fill up the bucket somewhere, right?
So so my, what I what I'm hearing is we're crossing out the cleaning supply room. And the laundry facility is just gonna be one per building with an industrial sink. Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, if the units do not include private kitchens, a facility must provide common full kitchen facility on each floor. Sink, refrigerator, stove, range top or oven, a common kitchen may be part of a required common area, but the kitchen must not. Be counted towards the required amount of common area, which we're getting rid of, or we haven't gotten there yet, required in, okay, so kitchens on each floor, yes or no?
I think, you know, one of the thoughts that I'm having is considerations of a- anyone with any sort of disability. Um, and so I, you know, I I do think if it if the unit's not gonna have a kitchen, there's and there's a, it's a multi floor building, there should be one on each floor. Um, and similarly, just with back, sorry, to the laundry, you know, the estates. Laundry facilities on each floor, but it also says a minimum ratio of one washer and one dryer per twenty units. That's not asking a lot, you know, so. I don't, we, you know, maybe there doesn't need to be one on each floor, but do we wanna maintain? Like, what we don't want is someone building a facility and not providing. The things that people need to be able to live there, you know, and creating then a burden, so do we wanna have some? You know, maintain at least the minimum ratio of one washer and one dryer per twenty units as like a fail safe that. I don't know, someone doesn't build a fifty unit, five story building with like one washing machine in the basement, you know? Call it good.
That's a good point.
That was my understanding or assumption that we'd maintain that um, that 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 ratio, at least.
I mean, I don't know, per twenty units, per twenty people, for one, that seems actually pretty prohibitive. In itself. Um, I, yeah, I would say if twenty units, twenty single occupancy, twenty people. Having one laundry machine is, that's terrible. Um, I would say that, like, I would say it's halved. You'd wanna have that, you want one per ten people, you reckon the amount of people going through doing laundry so for so on and so forth in a week. I, yeah, that's the kind of thing that where even that doesn't need to be on every floor, but you want more than one unit per. Uh, more than one uh laundry machine per twenty.
Can we call it twelve? Because that's a common number that I think of, you know, three floors and. Multiplied by a certain number on each. Twelve seems a little more usable than ten to me.
Yeah, I mean, I would say sure, like, I'd say like, it's it's my building, we have talked about getting one laundry and we have about. You know, uh, maybe tw- twelve units, we have about thirty people, and that would have been hard. Because they're not single occupancy, they're more family and couple, um, so I think, I, yeah, I think honestly, I'd say ten.
Okay.
It's reasonable in terms of of the amount of people using a a machine.
Hmm, fine with me. And then the the other circled one that I did was the um, unless if we're, unless we're still talking about kitchens, um, was the common area. Did we just kinda go with my feeling and Brian's feeling about that and are fine writing that off?
Yes, I think so.
Hopefully, the town's public spaces will be the common area.
Right.
Well, look at Dee below, because this is a good question for you, um. And it's kind of something that promotes a more suburban development pattern, um. Dee is saying that you must provide a minimum of fifty square feet per unit of usable common outdoor space accessible to all residents. Um, this may include yards, porches, decks, balconies, courtyards or similar spaces. Um, it can be reduced or waived in the urban center district, um, I'm not sure how you're feeling about that. Um, you know, this kind of shows up in other places, um, but it seems like if we're trying to reduce the cost of housing. And allow developers to have more units, this could be prohibitive to that, which um. You know, it's assuming that everybody needs outdoor space right on their their parcel, it's it's something to think about. It's a very, uh, you know, it's definitely a more rural or suburban pattern.
So everybody gets their own outdoor space or there's a common outdoor space, I can't.
No, it's called an outdoor space, but um. It's fifty uh fifty square feet feet per unit, so. I mean, to math, it could get up there.
That's a lot of space.
Facility, you'd have a, need to have a lot of common open space outside.
Yeah, no, that doesn't, I mean, but it but but it's waived within the within the downtown area.
Right.
Only urban center.
Only urban center, so if you're, if you're in one of the residential neighborhoods and maybe you have a deep lot and, you know, I'm thinking of like. You know, some of those parcels that we looked at, you might have a big front house up front. Where technically you maybe could then subdivide or put in an accessory dwelling unit out the back, but all of a sudden, it's getting taken up by this requirement. For all this outdoor space.
Yeah, no, that 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 doesn't seem necessary. It's, yeah, a- again, we wanna enforce people coming downtown, being in their big, our public spaces, yes, Prudence, I saw your hand.
Would we wanna reduce the number of square feet then, rather than eliminating it, you know, we're trying to balance um. Having the developments be livable and and pleasant and then also, you know, economic to. To build and to rent, so just trying to to meet that that good balance, so we probably would want some outdoor space. I would think, but yeah, not fifty, I don't know, should it be twenty or something like that? Ten, ten square feet per unit?
Yeah, ten seems, I mean, that seems, what do you think, Sue, you probably have a brain that can.
Um, well, I mean, I think we can do what we want, I do question whether or not it's um, it's even necessary. To be honest, um, I feel like we're imposing kind of a. A standard, um, you know, if you're across from the crawl lot, you know, that could be your open space. Um, or if we do wanna promote the use of the town's public spaces and make them better. Um, you know, plenty of people live in cities without a requirement for open space and.
Right, I mean, I, in New York City, there was no space associated with the places that I lived. The city itself is the space that you utilized, it wasn't like.
Right. So I'm not talking about removing it at all, but I think it's kind of, it's one of those, I guess, value, um, kind of judgments.
Okay, uh, Dorian, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I think, yeah, tha- that's a hard one, uh, it's a hard one, because when you think about what. Outdoor, you want to have like a nice outdoor uh living space if it's not in a downtown proper. Uh, I think obviously that's waived in downtown proper, I, yeah, I feel like you, maybe you could limit the amount of space. You do wanna have a decent amount, like a nice patch of outdoor space. Um, as accessible as possible, um, that feels honest. Uh, I think you can maybe knock down the amount of, the amount, uh, the amount of it. Uh, but yeah, I think you do want a fair bit, a nice piece, even it's like, cuz you don't. It's nice, yeah, you wanna encourage people to use the the park across the place, but like, you wanna be able to also say, have your own. Have your own spot where you're just having a picnic that's relatively close to your own home, um, that feels right.
So.
What if we, um, sorry?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Brian. Or whoever, who was that who was speaking, I didn't see.
Oh, that was me, that was uh Andrew.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
If we just, um, what if we had some sort of just stand like standard, so it's not per dwelling unit, they're just requirement for outdoor space? And then we could figure out a certain size, I'm not sure that would work, but you know, so it kind of get, it just it's a requirement. I'm not sure how you all wanted to find how much that would be, just a thought.
Yeah, just to jump in here, the the building setbacks are gonna create open space, um. Regardless, and it's gonna be contextual based on the district. It's really matter, wanna actually have it programmed so that's open space use. You know, do you want them to have a barbecue grill, do you want them to have a bench where they can smoke, or do you just wanna leave that be?
Sue, I, the, we can just designate that they have space and then and then.
Yep.
In the permitting, you figure out how big it's gonna be.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, um, Tom, do you wanna keep going?
Yeah, yes, and and thanks, Sue, and and others for mentioning or noticing some of the parts that I didn't circle, good points with those. Yeah, let's move on to the the last one, which is the first one, if someone can scroll up.
Yes, it should be coming.
It's funny, when I was going through this one, it's about parking, I I was thinking it was just for all types of residences and then afterwards. I noticed it's just for attached housing, which is is, you know, um, which is duplexes and. And um. And townhouses or row houses, so we don't really have many of those, I don't think. But regardless, um, and and this is something maybe I'd like to bring up again, just in 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 our general sense of of parking. Um, townwide and for residences, I I'm not sure that I'm, you know, I understand the, you know, we all. Um, don't like the the tyranny of the vehicle and everything and we wanna hide the parking lot and cars and put them around back, but. It 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 creates limitations, it lots need to be bigger and um. It ends up meaning that more of the lot is driveway. And so I I I think we should just face facts, which is that people are getting around by car. Or to the extent that they are, we shouldn't um add. Um. We shouldn't add like um a roundabout path to put the 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 driveway around back if the simplest. Um, and easier way is just to to park right in front or park in a garage that's right in front. Um. You know, it's. It's just kind of putting blinders on to the reality and 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 adding more complications and costs. And then one might say more, you know, and more impervious surface too, um, with longer driveways.
Andrew.
So.
You know, I I agree with you, Tom, um, you know, where I went to college, they, we had neighborhoods where you, alleys. In the back of the house and then you had sidewalks in the front with grass and then people park on the street. Or they could park their vehicles behind in the alleys, not from the street, so the street was more of, you know. You know, for public, you know, pedestrian activities and it was great, um, I I thought that was a great design and that was actually. Um, you see it more out west in some of those neighborhoods, out just outside more of the urban cores. And I thought it was a great development pattern, because really a lot more infill development. You didn't have all that impervious surface on the front yards, mostly lawn space, and then we had really. And then we had really small setbacks. Um, obviously, I mean, the only streets I think are similar are like Whipple and Bullock, um, just because that's near where I live. And I was such great potential for that kind of development. They're still though developed like any other street, just because they are street, but they act like alleys.
Yep, yeah, it's kind of like my street too.
Yeah, Sue, what are you showing us? Looks like you're, you're.
What I wanted to show you was the way I interpreted this regulation, so, and what it's trying to prevent. So it's saying that with attached houses, um, the garage has to either face the side or rear lot line or be set back at least 16 feet from the building front line. So really what we're trying to do is prevent snout housing here, which is, um, you know, doesn't make the streets very pedestrian. It, it is a car-oriented design. Um, there's nothing that would prevent, in, in what's written there, some sort of alley in the back where the park, where the garage is. So this image here is kind of, this, this could be the building frontline and all you see is the garage. You're not getting this porch or front door, you, you don't see any of that. And that's what we're trying to prevent here. I think the, the really cool picture you have of what I'm assuming is, you know, England or something like that, I, I love it. Um, I don't, we're not, I mean, I guess, it, it, I guess the fact that the garage, the garage is at the building line with the rest of it, um, I guess that, that is a problem and we need to fix something like that. But really what we were trying to do with this ordinance is to not allow these snout housing, which are devoid of character and they make for really bland streets and do prioritize the car. Um.
Are you calling?
That's the intent of it.
Are you calling snout?
Snout.
Snout, as in, as in piggy snout?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow. Interesting.
So I just wanted to show that, because that is, that's where this came from. But I, so if the concern, I mean, I understand we have cars and, you know, let's not necessarily try to hide it. Um, so maybe the point about having it, you know, maybe it needs to, the front door also needs, you know, we wanna, I can find a way to allow what we're seeing picture here, um, but still try to prevent the snout housing, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think so. And then, and then also to what, um, what Andrew brought up about, I looked at Whipple Street real close, um, or just now on Google Maps and I remembered it is, a part of my intent with this too, be, um, before I realized that it was just attached housing, is, um, is thinking about how some homes are closer than 16 feet to the road. So then forcing the driveways to be farther back on some of these small lots, that, that really prevents some constraints or impossibilities. And, um, yeah, so then, if there's a way we can accommodate that as well, you know, to be like, maybe they can be as close as, as the already established building is or already permitted building, when there's limitations with the lot.
Okay.
Okay. How are we all feeling?
Thanks for taking and considering all of my proposals.
Oh, thank you, Tom. I think we're, I think we've done a good night's work.
Thank you.
I, I would, I would entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn our meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second's it, all those in favor of adjourning at late? Okay, anybody opposed, anybody abstaining? Great, we are adjourned, thank you all. Happy holidays to everyone, take care, stay safe. Wear your mask.
Well, appreciate it, yes, wear your mask. Take care.
Nice job, Tom. Bye.